At this time, I'd like to call to order the November 1st meeting of the Lee County Board of Education. Thank you all. It's good to see everybody back around the table this evening. Last month, we had some empty seats and folks joining us online and so forth, so it is good to be back here together as what will officially be the last convening of this full Board of Education. As Ms. Sutton, this is your last official meeting. You've chosen not to run for reelection, so we thank you for your service here and for being here this evening. Let's take a moment, if we can, for a moment of silence as we consider the issues coming before our Board this evening. Thank you. And if you would, please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, we have two people who have signed up for public comments this evening. These gentlemen have been here before. I think you've got the drill at this point. Three minutes to address the Board at the expiration of your three minutes. I will tell you that's your time. Mr. Rumel.
Thank you. Alan Rumel in Sanford. Last month, we heard from the four underperforming schools on their improvement plans. The majority Board members didn't ask any insightful questions and took the opportunity to heap praise on those principals and express their certainty that the action plans will lead to results. That's it. Board members should be supportive of the administration, of course, but oversight and accountability is the critical role of the Board. The sarcasm in the chair's questions to the principals, asking if they use data in the teacher working condition survey to build the plans, wasn't lost on me because I come month after month begging for the Board to use those things to drive their own decision-making. So I reviewed those plans and have some questions I wanted to present since I'm not a Board member and I don't get the opportunity to do that. With my three minutes, I chose to dive into Easely since my kids are slated to attend middle school there. Easely says they will drive improvement of proficiency and growth to teachers by requiring teachers to quote "individualize instructional planning in response to individual student performance on pretests and other methods of assessment to provide enhanced learning opportunities for students," end quote. So that sounds like a lot of work and burden being placed on individual teachers, but the TWC survey for East says this: "The non-instructional time provided for teachers in my school was sufficient." Only 29% of teachers agree. So teachers are saying they already don't have enough time for planning, but now they're going to be required to plan for each individual student if I'm reading that action plan correctly. So another goal is to attract and retain qualified teachers because the 2021-22 school year saw a whopping 44% turnover rate at East. One action plan to support that goal says, quote, "70% of staff will join the hospitality/sunshine team," end quote. The TWC survey says this about their time: "Teachers are protected from duties that interfere with their essential role of educating students." Only 29% of teachers agree with that. So this tells me that teachers are saying they get pulled away to do non-teaching work too much already. Also from the TWC survey, "Teachers have sufficient instructional time to meet the needs of all students." 75% agree with that. So that, along with the responses about non-instructional time, suggests to me that teachers think they have enough time to teach but not enough time to plan and do the other preparations needed. So with those things in mind, is it really reasonable to expect those two action items to be successful based on the plan as written? I think this is the type of inquiry I would expect from Board members who claim to put our kids first. We need school Board members who won't just fall over themselves to heap praise on the administration but rather will work with, challenge, and question administrations' actions to ensure we have the best plans in place to improve Lee County schools, and we do not have that right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gaster.
Chris Gaster, Sanford. I'm talking tonight about Lee County High School, what they have implemented on some of the things for their low performance. Mr. Rumel actually brought it to my attention the other day, and we talked about it, and it concerns him, it concerns me, and it should concern a lot of people. One of the things that the principal mentioned was talking about restorative action. And sadly, today on the internet, everything's covered up, so you can't find a real definite answer of what restorative action is. But I did find a couple of things based on restorative action. It deals with people that it performs a benefit to people with institutional racism, gender, anything like that. It seems like it's a different way to treat punishment when schoolkids do wrong, and it leans towards racial equality, some of that CRT crap that's been trying to be pushed down everybody's throats. It seemed like this is just another method. They just put it in a bucket and stirred it up and called it something different. Mr. Dawsonback is going to talk about it here in a little bit about some, and y'all's unfinished business, about the low-performance school plans. I would suggest, as a school Board member, to get with these, this principal, and find out exactly what her definition and what she's trying to implement. I don't believe that parents would go along with that stuff if they knew what the exact definition of that was. Like Mr. Allen said, I truly believe it's bogus principles on its face. We have disciplinary action, and I think you're setting a student up for failure if you try to do this this way, and then they get in the real world, and then they have a conflict, and they're going to have to do the time for the punishment they committed. There ain't going to be no restorative action in the real world. So I think you need to teach the kid, by serving others if they get in trouble, that's one thing, teach them to serve others. So that's all I wanted to say about that, and that is how the principal is going to explain exactly what she is going to do in her definition of restorative action. Thank you.
Thank you. That completes the public comments portion of this evening's meeting. I've asked a couple of Board members to share the Lee County Schools' vision and a portion of Policy Code 2120, the Code of Ethics for School Board Members. The Lee County Schools' vision statement, please.
Lee County Schools, in partnership with the community, will provide challenging learning experiences for students in a safe and supportive environment. We are committed to academic excellence, technological innovations, social responsibility, and lifelong learning. Our success will be demonstrated by the achievement of our students and their positive participation in society.
Thank you. McCracken.
Code of Ethics, Policy 2120. The Board recognizes that collectively and individually, all members of the Board must adhere to an accepted Code of Ethics in order to improve public education. Members of the Lee County Board of Education should avoid conflicts of interest and appearance of conflicts of interest as we handle the work of the Board, avoid the solicitation and/or acceptance of gifts in return for advice or assistance on matters concerning the operation of the business of the Board, avoid the misuse of public funds, avoid misrepresentation or falsification of facts, and avoid making confidential information public. The Board accepts the Code of Ethics established by the North Carolina School Board Association.
Thank you. At this time, we have the agenda before us. Are there any questions? Hearing none, I entertain a motion for the approval of the agenda.
So moved.
We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none. We also have the minutes of the regular Board meeting of October 11th, 2022.
So moved.
We have a motion for the approval of the minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second on the floor. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? There is none. At this time, we move to the non-action items of the night's meeting. Under the chairman's report, there was a special request for Ms. Womack to be allotted some time for a special announcement this evening. Ms. Womack?
I am both honored and humbled to be asked to present this award on behalf of our governor. Tonight is a very special night in the life of Pamela Allen Sutton. As she is recognized for her lifetime commitment for helping others as a teacher, principal, and school board member, tonight she is presented with the Order of the Longleaf Pine Award. Among the various honors and awards our governor can bestow, the citizens of our state, none is more valued than the Longleaf Pine Award. Since its creation in 1963, it has been presented to honored persons who have a proven record of dedicated service to the state of North Carolina. Throughout Ms. Sutton's life, she has consistently gone above and beyond in achieving personal and professional goals and inspiring excellence to others. Among her achievements include Valley Victorian of the Western Hurry High School, an accomplished pianist, fifth grade, graduated fifth in her class at Campbell University, shared a Masters of Art in Music at East Carolina University, and graduated with honors. She has taught music in Cumberland County where she shared her love of music and especially the piano to elementary school students. She was selected as a Teacher of the Year and the District Teacher of the Year for Cumberland County Schools. She was also selected to the North Carolina Principals Fellows at Fayetteville State where she earned her Masters of School Administration. She was a principal at B.T. Bullock. She led the B.T. Bullock in achieving the inaugural Head of the Class Award, named Lee County, she was also named Lee County Principal of the Year. She retired with 30 years of service and was elected to the Lee County School Board. Pam has always inspired excellence in others by repeatedly saying, "Together, we can achieve more." Congratulations, Pam, for a life well-lived.
Congratulations. The Chair has no other items to present this evening, so I would welcome Dr. Bryan to the podium for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Sutton, congratulations. Just some information that I shared with you all this afternoon, and we've put it out on social media. As you know, we've been recognizing our Educators of the Year, and we're very excited to announce that the Assistant Principal of the Year for Lee County Schools is Sal Cosmo. Sal is the Assistant Principal at B.T. Bullock Elementary School, does an outstanding job, and actually, this afternoon, we went out and surprised him and the staff with the presentation, and very well-received and very excited his family could be there, which is always nice, and just very, very proud of Sal and what he's done and the great work he's done for B.T. Bullock and Lee County Schools. So very much congratulations to him. Also, last week, in my weekly letter, I recognized a couple of events that our two traditional high schools had put on, which I thought were very, very important and very committed to community service. The idea of student government at Lee County High School is work to give back, and they did a trunk-or-treat for community children to come by, and a great sort of event here at the front of the school, which we thought was great. And the Hospitality and Tourism NAF Academy at Sully High School put together a Powderpuff football game, which collected canned goods for CUOC, a great cause, which certainly supports backpack pals for Lee County Schools and a great partnership and relationship there. So I always think it's great. So many of our clubs and different student organizations give so much back to the community. I thought it was very important to recognize them. Also, just wanted to mention that last week, we celebrated all of our Educators of the Year, Teachers of the Year, Beginning Teachers of the Year, Principal of the Year, the Teacher of the Year, we had a North Carolina Biology Teacher of the Year, and our EC, Exceptional Children Teacher of the Year. So we had a nice dinner at WB Wicker Elementary School and recognized all of our folks and thanked them for their great contributions to our schools. And as you all know, this is a very busy time of the year. We have lots of different extracurricular activities going on, and we had playoff events, playoff games going on in various sports with teams advancing, and the 42nd Annual Capitol Classic was also last Saturday. Lee County High School hosted, it's what has become sort of a traditional band competition in the state of North Carolina and actually into Virginia. There were several, a couple of teams there from Virginia that competed, so a very, very nice event, and kudos to the staff for putting that on. Before we get to recognition of our Clean School of the Month award, I do want to mention that State Superintendent Catherine Truitt, as many of you already know, has been working on, with help from across the state of North Carolina, the Portrait of a Graduate work, which is going back into last, the early part of this year, and three different sets of meetings involving stakeholders from regions across the state, trying to define what a competency, what a portrait of a graduate should look like and what those competencies should be that we're aspiring to. And just for everyone's information, I know you already know this, but the competencies that have been put forward by this committee headed up by Superintendent Truitt, competencies, if I can say it, include adaptability, communication, collaboration, critical thinking, empathy, a learner's mindset, and personal responsibility. And we believe in all those things, certainly think they are important. There is room for districts to work on that and add and sort of provide different elements to work with that. So we're working, have been working on a plan for what that might look like within our school district and what we think we need to do to make sure our graduates are as successful as possible to enhance their opportunities that they have. On that note, I will ask Dr. Waller to come forward to award our Clean School of the Month. And Madam Chair, I might have one more thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
First, Dr. Bryan. For the second month in a row, I'm very pleased to announce that Floyd L. Knight is again our Clean School Award with a 99.5.
Board members, Madam Chair, thank you for this recognition. Our wonderful custodians worked tirelessly to keep our school clean and ready for students to learn. It is no easy task, but they do a great job. And our school is wonderful, and I invite, it's open to all visitors, so please come out and see all the exciting and wonderful things that our students are doing. It is every-day, keep-us-on-our-toes type of day, and you'll never, you'll never miss a beat if you come and visit. They'll keep you engaged, and you will have a time of your life. Ask Dr. Bryan, he came to our Glow Night, or Glow Day. But thank you again, Dr. Waller, this truly is, you know, it may be a small recognition, but all of our custodians across the county do a wonderful job keeping our schools clean, and just having a clean school creates a sense of pride, not only for our students but our staff members. And having that sense of pride rolls over to everyone that comes in that door, so please come out and visit us. Thanks.
Thank you.
Let me take my sign.
Congratulations, Jennifer, and to your staff.
Absolutely.
I want to get the list, one other thing for our Portrait of a Graduate work. I also think it's important to note that the organizations that supported Superintendent Truitt in her work, besides the stakeholder groups across the state, of course, North Carolina Department of Public Instruction, North Carolina Department of Commerce, North Carolina Chamber of Commerce, BEST NC, North Carolina Community College System, the UNC System, North Carolina Independent College Universities, My Future NC, a pretty important and wide-scale group in support of that work. Just wanted to make sure you all were aware of that in the public. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we'll turn to the committee reports. The Curriculum and Instruction Meeting, I'm sorry, the Correction, it's contagious. None of us can talk tonight. It's the cough drop, I say. The Curriculum and Instruction Committee did not meet last month. Do you have the date of the next meeting?
Yes. We meet Wednesday, November 11th, at JR Ingram.
Thank you.
November 11th is a Friday.
That's a Friday. You said November 11th. I think it's 16th.
November 16th, I'm sorry.
That was Veterans Day.
Yeah, I was about to say, a Veterans Day?
November 16th, excuse me, Wednesday, November 16th.
Thank you. And that's at Ingram?
At Ingram, yes.
Thank you. The Facilities and Technologies Committee met on October 25th. Mr. McCracken.
Madam Chair, myself, Jamie Ladati, Dr. Bryan, and Chris McNeil toured Tranway Park with Reggie Allred, COO of the Old North State Baseball League, in order to see where the improvements will occur at the ball field, and this item will be discussed again at the committee meeting on November 29th, 2022. The security entrance design for Bullock, Deep River, Edwards, Floyd Knight, Greenwood, Ingram, the Early College, Tranway, WB Wicker, and Warren Williams is, we're continuing to evaluate the security entrance designs, and we'll again discuss this on November 29th. The purchase of 700 teacher laptop computers and 150 teacher-assistant Chromebooks through the Emergency Connectivity Fund was discussed. It was consensual to the committee to award the purchase of 700 laptops and 150 teacher-assistant Chromebooks to Netcom Business Solutions in the amount of $616,373.50. Funding source through the Emergency Connectivity Fund will be provided will be $338,000, and out of Esser Funds, there will be $278,000, and it will be placed under new business, and Ms. Hilliard would be discussing that as well in her Finance Committee Report. From there, we moved on to roof replacement bids for the Central Office, and it was consensual to the committee to award the roof placement bid to the Central Office to AAR Roofing in the amount of $227,000 using capital outlay money, funding source, and it will be placed on tonight's consent agenda, along with the facade maintenance and repair bids for the Central Office. Consent is to the committee to award the facade maintenance repair to Midwest Maintenance in the amount of $94,000. Capital outlays, the funding source, and put on consent agenda as well tonight. The next F and T committee meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, November 29th, in the second floor conference room. That concludes my report, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Thing scrolled on me. The Finance Committee met on 10/27. Ms. Hilliard?
Yes. The Finance Committee met, and we discussed, it went through a second committee with the financial piece, the purchase of the 700 teacher laptops and 150 teacher-assistant laptops through the Emergency Connectivity Fund. And since it came from one committee and was approved in the second, it is under, it's placed under the new business for tonight's meeting. That was the biggest piece. We have our next meeting, our next regularly scheduled meeting is Thursday, January 26th, 2023, at 5:00 p.m., second floor of the Heinz Building.
Thank you. And then finally, the Policy Committee met on October 18th. Mr. Kelly.
Yes, ma'am. We met on October 18th in the Heinz Education Building. The policies that came up for discussion was Policy 2123, Board Member Opportunities for Development, Policy 4130, Discretionary Emission, Policy 4525 and 6125, administering medications to students, and Policy 7130, Dillon with Licensor. All those policies were accepted by the committee, and then we moved to these next policies I'll read out that are required and relate to North Carolina's agreement with the Compact on Educational Opportunity for Military Children, which is Policy 3420, 3460, 3620, 4050, 41, 4110, 4155, 4400, and 4700. And all of those were approved as well, and we will discuss those on first reading later tonight in news business, and at that time, that concludes my committee's report.
Mr. Kelly, do you have the date of the next policy meeting?
I do not. I'll look to the lady that keeps us in line all the time, Mrs. Britt.
November 22nd. Thank you. At this time, we'll move to the action items on our agenda for this evening. First, we have the consent agenda as presented. Are there any discussion or questions regarding the consent?
Moved.
Hearing none, we have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. We have a motion, a second on the floor. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There is none. The consent agenda is approved as presented. Under unfinished business this evening, we have the Low Performing Schools Plan. Mr. Dossenbach?
Good evening, everyone. As outlined in general statute, the goals presented to you by principals at our last meeting were then placed on each school's website, where they were kept for a period of two weeks, where stakeholders could provide feedback or ask any questions about the proposed goals, proposed goals or plan. During that time, our schools received two comments, neither of which were directly related to any changes that needed to be made in the school's improvement plans. Specifically, one of the comments had a question for the school about their child's homework, and another quote praised the improvements that had been made at Lee County High School.
Excuse me, sorry.
The finalized plans before you tonight for approval remain unchanged. Due to that fact, from the preliminary plans presented in October, the goals before you have been approved and voted on by staff at each individual school. If approved, the schools will place these goals within the state-required NC STAR template, and it will be submitted to the Department of Instruction by November 8th. Before opening the floor, any questions, I did want to clarify a line within one of the proposed plans. Dr. Bryan informed me that a few board members had questions about a part of Lee County High School's plan and asked me to look into that and address that this evening that mentioned restorative justice, and asked me to provide some additional information. More specifically, within their plan, it mentions training on restorative justice practices for staff. It mentions that training within the goal that talks about providing support for the physical, social, emotional, behavioral health of students, staff, and families. I met with the principal this week, and I want to clear up any confusion about what restorative justice is and is not within this plan. There are a large number of people who think restorative justice is simply an alternative to traditional discipline, but I can assure you that is not what is taking place at Lee County High School. Our district has a very strict code of conduct in place that governs student behavior and discipline, and the restorative justice piece that's being piloted at Lee County High School does not and will not absolve a student from possible punishment. It's important to also know that Lee County High School is only focusing on one aspect, and will continue to only focus on one aspect, of the many layers of restorative justice, which is the piece that ensures that adults are creating an environment within their classrooms to foster positive, meaningful relationships with students. The core of what Lee County High School is trying to do with restorative justice is specifically called community building circles. Within that, a small group of teachers, along with a counselor and a social worker, who volunteered to be a part of this pilot at Lee County High School and participate in training this summer, were provided professional development on how to build a culture of care within their classroom, where students feel safe and the environment is conducive for learning, where students feel comfortable and feel heard. Providing this type of environment was put in place to create a sense of family that allows the school to be proactive and with potential discipline issues by hopefully preventing them in the first place by forming positive, meaningful relationships with adults. There's no research out there that will dispute the fact that students learn more and behave better for teachers that they know and like. And that's what Lee County High School is attempting to do. In summary, the training only involved teachers who volunteered to be a part of this process. The school will continue to follow the code of conduct and issue discipline action as needed. And finally, the ultimate goal is to prevent or decrease discipline through forming relationships and respect. So hopefully, that answers any questions specific to the restorative justice piece as far as what Lee County High School is doing, and I will certainly entertain any questions that you all may have.
Did you miss me last week? I mean, last month? Well, if you knew I tried to call in, I was actually in Jerusalem celebrating my 30th wedding anniversary, and there happened to be a bombing go off, and therefore I could not get in for connectivity. But in my absence, it appears that some things have come forward in reference to this plan. And I have multiple questions, such as the pitfalls, maybe I'm thinking possibly Lee County Schools using that phrase itself, restorative justice. And they say there's no definition for it. There's multiple peer-related research papers that discuss the restorative justice in our schools. Some of the main pitfalls that we have, and I would like to ask you this as well, the funding. Once you start the program, it's been proven, and I have all the data you can possibly want to read about it. Once you start that program, it's not just a one-time thing. It's not just, let's throw it up in the air and see if this is a good idea, does it work? Let's talk about our feelings. There's multiple avenues that can go in the wrong direction with this. For instance, if you have a child that's complaining of being bullied, how comfortable would that child be going into an environment where there's a teacher, a social worker, or a counselor, whatever, to talk about the situation and what happened? Now, not that I'm against what they're trying to do, it's just I have watched our schools in action. And for us to come up with something that is titled restorative justice gives the implication that we have not provided justice in our school system, or that we need to restore something that we no longer have. So back to my questions that I have, where is the funding from the program coming from? Do you plan on hiring a coordinator to do that? Which most literature requests that you do, they suggest that you have a coordinator, a managing coordinator, and it is defined as innovative approach to offending and inappropriate behavior, which puts repairing harm done to relationships in people over and above the need for assigning blame and dispensing punishment. So how is this being funded? I know you have volunteers, but who's paying for this? And how do you intend to sustain it if, in fact, you think it's effective?
So we are not full-fledged at Lee County High School going into and paying for the restorative justice piece that if you Google it, you will find. What we have is a couple people who, outside of our school system, heard about this and were interested in that one particular piece about teachers forming more positive relationships with students. And so they pulled what research they could find online in, and that's sort of what we're doing. So we're not paying for anything. We've not signed on to be a part of any type of pilot. We don't have any plans to hire any type of coordinator. We're not going down the road of getting into restorative justice as some other school districts have. We just brought in this one particular piece because something that the data showed at Lee County High School, and the principal felt strongly about, is that students wanted, they didn't feel like they could connect with the staff. And I think there's tons of research that shows if students and staff can have and form a better relationship, then the learning environment improves. So we are not going down the road of restorative justice and buying the whole kit and caboodle. We're just simply bringing a piece of that training that teachers volunteered to take part in within that one particular school.
And who's providing the training?
There's one administrator who has gone through some of this themselves, and they brought that one piece into the program.
Okay, I would challenge you that possibly it could be reworded a different way if you're trying to build some type of relationship with the students and the staff. Restorative justice, you can't, you don't just pick one little section and say, this is what we want to do, and this is what we're going to call it. That phrase is misleading, and it opens up the leeway, as you know, that's one of the top five things of critical race theory. When you say that out loud in the public, the public just goes crazy, and you know that. But this is just one step out of those five. And anyone that votes on this today, you're basically voting that, yes, critical race theory. You have opened that door. This is a door that I'm not certain that we need to open. Now, and this is my humble opinion, I have been in the schools. We actually had a parent, I watched the meeting, you had a parent that came here and complained at the last board meeting about inappropriate Instagram messages, you know, messages that were sent to her son from a school. So they obviously don't have a problem somehow making relationships. So possibly that goal could be reworded to say, to rebuild professional relationships with some of the students in the school. And that would just be my only recommendation. And that's my huge concern with this. After reading all the data from Hopkins and all the peer-related stuff, you cannot just take one section that says you are doomed to fail. And I'm certain of who took this course before has also read the same material that I am reading. And I don't have any further questions other than is there a possibility that they would be willing to change the way this is worded and not call it restorative justice because it is not restorative justice?
That's certainly something that we can take to the school improvement team. They are the ones that put this together, voted on this plan, and decided what should be in it.
Yes, I think it's a great thought process in theory, but not the way it's written in this document. Thank you.
Just for the record, I disagree pretty much with everything that was just said. The messages for the student were in regards to school recruiting sports players in between schools. It had nothing to do with any of this that we're talking about right now. And you can call it fandango, whatever you want to call it, it doesn't make any difference. The fact that we have certain key words that funnel into political agendas is disturbing and disappointed on many levels. And it's on both sides of the aisle, I'm not trying to say that, but relationships are the most important thing. We've got a bunch of new teachers due to circumstances out of our control. And I think all of those teachers could stand, I know I could stand some training on how to build relationship with kids these days. So I think it's a great plan. You can call it whatever you want, but I'm excited that the school improvement plan, school improvement team came up with it and brought it forward as an option.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Can you elaborate on specific strategies that will be implemented to build relationships between staff and students?
So the biggest thing that they do that I mentioned that talked about, let me get the specific name, the community building circles. Part of what they do every other week is that teachers that volunteered, students sit in a circle, and they call it community building, and they get to know their students better because so many students.
Is that, I'm sorry, I don't mean to cut you short, but is that what we would have called an elementary, a morning meeting? Just to give me a frame of context?
For a lack of a better term, it's getting to know this, not only just the teachers knowing the students, but what we found during COVID is students don't even know one another. Students are less likely to argue with another student in their class if they feel like they make a personal connection with them. They are less likely to disrespect a teacher and vice versa if they feel like there's a personal relationship. So there's not a specific group, that is the only piece that they are implementing where every few weeks, they get in that circle and just what is going on in your world and taking the time to get to know students.
So that's called community building circles, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So if they're going to be doing this on a systematic basis every two to three weeks, what guidelines are they going to be using? Is there like a document, a curriculum, that they'll be using? I'm just curious.
No, there's no specific curriculum that we're using because like I say, we have not gone down the road of using this program. I'm not sure if there's a specific template. I know that there were specific question strategies to just sort of break the ice, you know? I think there were, when I met with them, there were some specific questions. You know, what's going on in your life right now that is causing you a challenge? What's something that you are excited about? So it's just probing questions to get the conversation going. But no, there's not specific questions that they will ask and follow every single time. It's just meant to spark conversation and form relationships.
I think people forget that high school is so very different from elementary and middle school, where you're often co-horted with a group from homeroom. You stay with that same group of students for pretty much the entire school year. There's very limited opportunity for you to intermingle with the variety of students. Once you hit high school, suddenly every single class you're going to is going to have a different group of people in it, and it can lead to a lot of disconnect, where students don't have an identity of unity. And COVID certainly did not help that when they were stuck alone behind computers in their own individualized homes. And this is an opportunity for students to talk to one another in ways that they haven't done since middle school, of what are the issues that are going on in society, and how is that affecting your mindset today? What can we do to help you overcome whatever that challenge is to that mindset? And as you said, there are so many young people out there that do not have your traditional adult mentor relationships at home. And so they come to school, and they don't really know how to interact with an authority figure. They don't really trust authority figures, and they come with a chip on their shoulder. And if they have somebody that shows them that they care and that their opinion matters and that they're valued, then they suddenly realize they don't have to take the chip off their shoulder and throw it at everyone they meet, but rather can communicate and talk through issues and hopefully prevent some of the arguments, the fights, the things that lead to those very disciplinary issues. I don't believe we have throwaway children in our district, that we say, well, they just can't be helped. They need to be put in jail and made to pay the crime or pay the time for their crime. That's what we're trying to prevent. We want to stop the classroom-to-prison pipeline, and one of the ways to do that is to relate to people and show them that people care. And I don't have a problem whether you call it restorative justice, whether you call it caring and concern. I don't care what you call it. The fact is that we need to do something to show these students that they're not failures, as so many want to say over and over and over again. We are not failures. We are prime for growth, and these students need all the support they can get. And if that comes from a classroom teacher who has volunteered, all the better.
I think it's also, it's a group of kids that aren't involved in athletics. They're not involved in theater. They're not involved in band. They're not involved in a club. They come to school, they go home, they come to school, they get in trouble, they get suspended, and they come back, and they have no one to go to to help them figure out, what do I do better the next time? And this, if I understand it correctly, is the group that we are really focusing on, and it's in a very, very important group that gets left out sometimes. And I think it's a great idea for us to be able to do this, to handle those exact kids.
And to piggyback what Pat said, those kids may also be taken care of. Other siblings at home, working jobs, they don't have that time for those extracurricular activities, but they also don't have that time to chat with anybody to let them know that. So they just keep it bottled up, and having that relationship with the teacher is just one more caveat to their success in school.
I have another question. I'm sorry, I'm just trying to, you know, wrap my brain around it and understand everything about it. So you mentioned there's a volunteer that's going to be heading this up. Is that, am I understanding that correctly?
No, the teachers that participated in this training and are implementing in their classroom all had to be voluntary.
I understand. So it wasn't forced on any teachers?
No, ma'am.
Okay. So is this going to be, when they have the community building circle, is this going to be each of these teachers that's volunteered to do it come up with their own set of questions for their group? Is there going to be inconsistency across the board, across, you know, so that all of the students are being exposed to the same type of experience? Just trying to figure out the logistics of how it's going to work?
No, there's not a set list of questions, like I said. And at the end of the day, these are just strategies to try to get teachers to form better relationships with students.
Right.
And that is going to differ from person to person because we all interact differently. So no, there's not a set. Now, you know, because I want to get back to and make sure everybody understands, we're not trying to implement restorative justice hardcore. We've taken this one idea that this school thought would be beneficial for students and tried to implement it. I don't think, I can't speak for the school. I don't think they care what we call it. I just think they were trying to be transparent, which is a word I hear a lot.
Stating what the one idea?
What the one idea? Forming more positive relationships with students.
Okay. So my question then will be very simple. With restorative justice, every parent and any educated person sitting there online, reading this material that goes on, why do you have restorative justice? There are four main reasons. Zero tolerance policies increase the number of youths being pushed out of schools. A lot of schools go this way, so they don't, they have less dropouts in the school system. Helps get your graduation numbers up. There is a racial ethic disparity in the terms in which youths receive school punishments. Number three, increasing school misbehaviors handed over to the police disproportionately. Number four, research strongly links suspension, I mean, suspension and other school disciplines to failure to graduate. This is what they will see if they go look up this phrase that you're using. So my question is, how is that different than something as simple as conflict resolution? Do we not have conflict resolution in our schools where they sit and they talk and they put it all out? Do we not have conflict resolution in our schools where they sit and they talk and they put it all out? And you can blow it off and say, we're doing everything to help our kids and seeing come by y'all, you want to. But the reality is this, if we actually have a program, and I assume that we do, the student conflict resolution program should meet all those needs without bringing in another program? If that one is successful.
Well, luckily, we're not bringing in another program.
So how is this different than a student conflict resolution program?
It's not different.
I didn't think so. Thank you.
And you know, something else that I will point out, at the very root of what Lee County High School is trying to do is the job of every educator in our district. It's my job, it's your job as a board member to make sure people are comfortable and feel like they matter. And that's all we're trying to do here.
Just to reiterate, it does not supersede the code of conduct that's already on the books for Lee County schools.
No, sir, there is a code of conduct that will continue to be followed. If a student misbehaves or a student violates a rule, there will be consequences. This is not in lieu of anything. This is a proactive measure to hopefully prevent those things from happening. Because data shows, and that's what we're looking at, that the more you suspend children, the less they learn. And we're not trying to get away from, we're trying to keep the behavior from happening to begin with.
Call the question.
We have a request to call the question at this time. Is any further discussion?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we accept the plans with the alteration of calling it student conflict resolution program.
We have a motion to change Lee County High School's school improvement plan language to reflect conflict resolution plan. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Is there any discussion?
Does the conflict resolution plan involve teachers in the classroom today?
Do we know the nature of the conflict resolution plan at Lee County High School at this time?
No, no, ma'am.
I don't think we have the answer to that question.
Do they have a conflict resolution program?
I mean, there is no official conflict resolution program. And there's conflict resolution that takes place with guidance, that takes place with administrators, but teachers have not been trained on a specific program.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion, a second on the floor. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Sorry.
Aye.
Aye. The motion fails on a five-two vote.
Motion to accept the school improvement plans as presented.
We have a motion on the floor to accept the low performing schools' plans as presented.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
That is, the motion passes on a five-two vote. I just don't know that it's in our position to change a school improvement team's plan. That's the point at which I'm confused. That is not our position. At this time, we have the second reading of several policies coming before this board. Mr. Kelly.
Second reading for school, for our policies. Let's see. First, policy seventy-five-ten leave. Second, policy seventy-five-fifty, which is absent student implement weather. We, as a committee, we changed one thing on the North Carolina School Board Association recommendation. We put in a statement that would align with what our school district has been doing for years. And it refers into the school closing guidelines for Lee County staff. And then policy seventy-eight-ten and policy seventy-eight-fifteen. That is the policies to come up tonight for second reading.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none. The second reading of the policies is approved. At this time, we have the new business, we have the first reading of many policies. Mr. Kelly, take a deep breath.
Yes, ma'am, here we go. All right. First, we have policy twenty-one-twenty-three, which is board member opportunities for development. Policy forty-one-thirty, discretionary mission. Moving on, forty-five-twenty-five and sixty-one-twenty-five administering medication to students in policy seventy-one-thirty. All those come from the North Carolina School Board Association, recommendations from them. Then continuing on, we have policies that are related to the North Carolina Compact on Education Opportunity for Military Children, which is North Carolina General Statute one fifteen C dash four oh seven dot twelve and extends benefits of the compact to children of the certain inactive members of the National Guard and Reserves. Those policies are thirty-four-twenty, student promotion accountability. Policy thirty-four-sixty, graduation requirements. Policy thirty-six-twenty, extracurricular activity in student organizations. Policy forty-fifty, children of military families. Policy forty-one-hundred, age requirement for initial entry. Policy forty-one-ten, communication and health requirements for school admission. Policy forty-one-fifty-five, assignment to classes. Policy forty-four-hundred, attendance. And policy forty-seven-hundred, student records. And again, that was approved in a committee.
Okay, those are on for first reading at this time. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none. At this time, we have the purchase of the computers under the Emergency Connectivity Fund. This was come, this came through both the Facilities and Technology Committee as well as the Finance Committee. Is there any further discussion on this item? I think the point of clarification is that there was a third wave of funding from the federal government for the Emergency Connectivity Fund. And that has allowed for the purchase of these computers at an extremely subsidized rate for the district. At this time, I would entertain a motion unless there's discussion. Is there any discussion?
I just wanted to recognize the Central Office for picking up on that third wave. You know, we went from purchasing about three hundred computers to eight hundred and fifty for the same price. So it was a great job by the Central Office staff on that one.
Absolutely.
Agreeing with Mr. Ladati. Now motion that we approve in that kind of business solutions, quote, for the seven hundred teacher laptops and one hundred and fifty teacher assistant Chromebooks for the price of six hundred and sixteen thousand, three hundred and seventy-three dollars and fifty cents.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There is none. At this time, we'll enter the non-action items of the board member comments. And this evening, Ms. Sutton, I would like to recognize you first. Thank you.
All right. First of all, I'd like to thank the citizens of Lee County for electing me as a public servant on this board four years ago. It has been an honor and a privilege to serve the children, parents, the school community and Lee County as a whole as a school board member for the past four years. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mr. McCracken.
I had several opportunities in the last couple of weeks to see truly what great kids in Lee County family we have in helping develop relationship with all our kids. First of all, the BT Bullock Fall Festival on Friday night was well attended. Thank you for all the teachers and students and staff that were there. It was very nice to see you, wonderful evening there. Dr. Bryan, as already mentioned, I call it the fill in the blank of the year. Whether you want to say teacher of the year, principal of the year, assistant of the year, whatever it was, whichever one you want to put in there. It's a fantastic banquet to recognize some great outstanding educators in Lee County. Third, congratulation to Southern Lee Men's Soccer player Isaac Morales, who scored five goals in one game against, in a very competitive game and was recognized in the state for that. So congratulations to Isaac for that. And finally, I attended two high school football games in the last two weeks with the same team on the field each night. The first week that I attended was homecoming. The second week that I attended was rival week. In the first week, I watched the total community atmosphere at the school. The second week, I watched an impressive football team participate in the game. Thank you, Southern Lee Cavaliers, for making two Friday nights memorable for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Hilliard.
Yes, as the end of my first term draws near, I reflected on my time as a board member. The last few years have greatly been, have been greatly rewarding and equally as difficult. The pandemic forced us to make many difficult decisions, decisions made using state guidelines. These divisions divided our community. An unnecessary hurt brought on by multiple groups of people who were unable to agree to disagree. A simple notion we teach our children. We put the pandemic in our rearview mirror and moved ahead to bring our students back to their normalcy in school days. I have enjoyed many sporting events, performances, festivals, school visits during my tenure. Every one of them, I love going in and seeing all the great things they're learning. The outside activities are just phenomenal. Greenwood had a wonderful fall festival. And as we discussed all these issues, all of them bring differing opinions and thoughts. The comments are welcomed, are in a great way for the people, public to share their comments and their concerns. As issues are discussed and addressed, the board, excuse me, considers all students in our school system. And like the rest of the world, our students come from many walks of lives. Some of our students come from homes that aren't equipped to instill life skills needed to successfully function in school setting. These may be some of our students who struggle the most, may be unable to self-regulate emotions or express themselves using appropriate language or action. The policies, actions or programs that are implemented by the board, excuse me, help assist students in becoming the best selves. There are many success stories that go unheard. Staff, parents and students share these victories among themselves. Please remember, our students deserve the best, but they don't always come equipped with the same tools in their toolbox. Our teachers and staff work with all the students regardless of the tools they have. They plan and implement for each student according to their need and what they have. They give all the students they need to succeed. As I consider every one of my decisions, I always put our students first.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Womack.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, I missed you guys. And second of all, we'll go back to some issues that I missed during that board meeting when a parent came before the school system and discussed the fact that her son from Lee County High, from Lee County, Southern Lee High School was being approached by coaches. I would like to inform that parent that when you come to these board meetings, they do not respond to your concerns. They will never respond to your concerns. If you want, if you have an issue within our schools and there's something that cannot be addressed or not addressed appropriately, I highly suggest that you go to policy code seventeen forty, forty-ten, as student and parents grievance procedure. You will find the policies under staff and student relationships, forty forty, seventy-three-ten and twenty-three-ten. It will also help you understand what the board can do versus what the superintendent can do. Many times we were called out as a board saying, you're not doing this, you're not doing this. The management of the school is the superintendent's responsibility. Our number one responsibility is the legislation of policies as the most important function of a school board member. So that being said, during the three minutes of my time, for the remainder of my time on this board, I will be informing parents what policies and where they can go to address those issues. The staff and student relations will let you know very quickly that it is inappropriate and that on social media, when you look at the social media and the restrictions that's on there, they are not allowed to contact a student without a parent's permission. Thank you so much, I appreciate your time and y'all have a blessed day.
Thank you. Mr. Kelly.
Thank you, Board Member Sutton, for serving our community for the last four years and all that you've given back to Lee County over your years of service in the school system. As many other board members, we attended many different fall festivals the last few weeks and different things. And I'm excited that Christmas season starts today, but let's stop for at least three days for Thanksgiving and give everybody a laugh there. Kind of breaks some tension in this room. Because that's what it's about, is educating our students. And throughout the discussion a while ago, I kept thinking about if we all just sit and close our eyes, who our favorite teacher was through our entire school system is what that program is about. The person you bond with and you think about the most when you think about your favorite teacher. That's what's going to happen in that school improvement plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ladati.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Sutton, congratulations on the order of the long leaf pine. I just wanted to first say congratulations to all the teachers of the year and beginning teachers of the year. Thank you for choosing to teach in Lee County schools. You could teach anywhere you want and you choose to be here with us and I recognize that and I appreciate that. I also wanted to thank Dr. Bryan and recognize his work with the advisory councils from each school. For those that don't know, each school chooses an advisory council made up of parents and faculty. And they also have a student advisory council. And Dr. Bryan makes it a point to meet with those councils regularly and receive feedback, both positive and negative, and then act on that feedback. So that's a powerful line of communication and an important line of communication. And so I just wanted to say thank you, Dr. Bryan, for that. And I hope those conversations continue to take a priority on your overcrowded plate of things to do. And last, I just wanted to say that it's so great to see all of the extracurricular activities ramping up and in full swing after the past two years of no activities or limited activities. It's such an important part of the overall education received in Lee County public schools in addition to the reading, math, science and history. And I just wanted to try and list some of those extras that went on in the last month. We had Battle of the Bands, multiple fall festivals, book fairs, tailgating events. We sent a team to compete in a robotics competition at the state fair. We had mock interviews for our high school students. We did dance parties, trunk retreats, family nights, movie nights, field trip, Floyd L. Knight color run, student-directed theater, Battle of the Books, Young Life, FCA, DECA Club, Beta Club, Earth Club, Random Acts of Kindness Club, Skills USA Club, Chess Club, student-led tutoring. And I didn't even mention the sports. I saw that Southern Lee has a bowling team this year, which I thought that was pretty interesting. But all those activities and events don't just happen, they take hours of preparation and planning, coordination, resources. And so to all the faculty and PTSOs and parents and grandparents and community partners, sponsors and volunteers that have poured time, money and effort into those events, thank you for that. And I just wanted to remind everyone, and from the list, the schools are open for business. If you need an opportunity to volunteer, there's opportunities for you. Your students should be in an extracurricular activity. It's good for them, it's good for everyone. All you have to do is reach out to PTSO of your desired school and you'll get a task. And I guarantee you'll get more out of it than you put into it. So thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I just want a simple second to wish every student that's out there taking some mid-semester testing this week. I know that I've got at least two in my household that have had some benchmarks this week and all the nervousness that goes with it. Always remember that show what you know, do the best you can. Teachers cheer them on as they try to cross these little thresholds of achievement. Do the best you can to prove that you're learning what you're setting out to do. Best of luck to each and every one of you. Teachers, take a deep breath, the holidays are coming and the sugar high that has been induced over the past two days is going to strike your classroom in full-fledged over the next little bit. Breathe easy, we will be praying for you. Thank you for everything that you do. Thank you to the administration of Lee County Schools for continuous, continuous focus on improving the situation for everyone involved. Thank you, everyone. At this time, I would entertain a motion for closed session.
I move that the Lee County Board of Education go into closed session under NCGS one four three dash three one eight dot one one A one, A three and A six to discuss confidential student information under NCGS one one five C dash four zero two to discuss confidential personnel information under NCGS one one five C dash three one nine and one one five C dash three two one and to consult with the board's attorney and maintain the attorney-client privilege.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There is none, we are in closed session.
Yeah.
Okay.
There we are.
All right, good deal. This time I'd like to call us back into order in the open session, the Lee County Board of Education. I believe we have one motion coming out of closed session this evening.
Madam Chair, make a motion to approve the human resource report as presented.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, any discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There is none. This time is a point of privilege. Ms. Sutton, I wish you a wonderful retirement from this board. I hope you get to enjoy the beach as often as I want to enjoy the beach.
I'm delighted on your behalf.
Well, I appreciate your service on this board and the time that we've spent at the days together. At that note, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
We have a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion, a second, any discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There is none, we stand adjourned. Thank you everybody, we'll see you back in December unless business calls us together between now and then. Thank you.